Dave, would you like to lead some pledge? Oh, I'm sorry, let's do the roll call first.
Um, Mayor Morris?
Here.
Mayor Potem Berfordis?
Here.
Alderman Green, he's on his way. Alderman Welch?
Yeah.
Alderman Madre?
Here.
Alderman Jones?
Here.
Mayor, did you have a quorum?
Dave, would you lead some pledge?
I am with you. To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for twenty-six seconds. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, and the allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Yes, thank you, Dave, for coming out. Uh, remember, this is a workshop meeting for council to discuss agenda items to be voted on in the future. Uh, first item is discussion concerning an agreement between City Jamaica Beach and Mercer, John D. Mercer and Associates for Professional Engineering Services for the 2023-2024 waterline replacement, phases four and five, not to exceed $118,635.86.
In your packets?
Yes, we have in our packets here, uh, the current projects. What we have here is, uh, phase three and phase four. Uh, we had $85,000 and some change left over, uh, from phase two and three, and we wanted to, uh, include that with, we want to include that with our, uh, take that away from the budget, so it comes down to 276,000. We want to go ahead and, what we're trying to get approved is the engineering for phase four
And five.
And five. And that's, uh, ends up being eighty, where'd it go? Eighty-five, uh-
Eighty-five, four and sixty-nine, twelve?
Yeah. And, um, so then it will end up being, where we're on budget of $339,783.76. Any discussion?
How many can we discuss this?
Well, we-
I'm going to give a problem if you can?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I don't have any problem with, um, um, the first phase, phase four. I just think we printed to wait until we, we more, uh, firmed up of our year's budget, because we may need this exact dollar someplace else. And engineering, and that's engineering, this isn't going to be done until 2023, probably 24, right?
Now, they'll do it now.
We're looking at doing it-
We'll start the engineering now. Now, but-
So, you're looking to roll them both together and work on it?
No, not the full amount, just the engineering.
Well, you know.
Both phases, yes.
Yeah, both phases of the engineering.
But in this coming budget, I thought it was at least be a phase four.
That will be the, yes.
But we're not considering phase five.
No. We're working out of this fiscal budget now, these monies are left over.
Well, I understand, but I'm just saying maybe we need the money someplace else.
It actually be more inexpensive if they come and do it at one time than having to come back out.
That was going to be my question.
Yes. These were just-
Where's the savings, yeah?
Do we think it's any likelihood that engineering costs are going to come down over the next two or three years?
It would be a little less, that's all the good money.
But he didn't really make any concrete promises of getting to it.
While they're here, engineering in phase four, already out there, they're going to energy, go ahead and do phase five, and they're also going to look at your book and just to see, and some drainage issues while they're here coming.
Well, Robert, you're, you know, you're the director of this now.
Let me just say that it would be, it would be who we, the city, to do this, because, uh, this is our beginning of the year budget, this is the one that's available right now, and you won't have to carry that over to the new, just with the year. That's why I would, staff would say, back when I'm doing this.
My question is, how much, how much savings has it given us?
That, I don't know the exact amount, but it's going to be cheaper to, less expensive for them to come out at one time and come, and-
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, I would love to check it out.
It'll probably lower your phase five, with the cost of $352, it's probably going to lower that. That's probably, it's going to be lower in the next, for phase five. Now, what it, what exactly the numbers is, I'm not a good tip.
You're saying that he's indicated it'll be lower for phase five. But we're kind of going ahead and, are we just discussing it at this point for, thank you? That's all I have in mind.
That's kind of what they did in phase one and two. They, they added both engineers together, and did them at the one, at one time, and then we kind of, yeah. So, this is just what, you know, $339 will, will finish engineering for five and complete profit phase four.
Any other discussions?
This is just for y'all to discuss, if you want to do that.
Uh, and then we'll vote on it, vote on it, uh, next meeting, right?
You need to know what you want to vote, to kind of, if you, yes, you want to-
If we're voting, I'd just like to see what we are saving. You know, I agree with our engineering costs, but still, my team will have a better feel on our budget, too.
My vote?
No, he said my vote.
Oh, my, so, I'm sorry.
Uh, next item, 542, unification landscaping, uh, for City Jamaica Beach and JBI City. Russell, you want to start this one?
I'll get started. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. My hopes in getting everybody together and discussing this is so we, all the parties involved can come together with some sort of unification. The overall condition of the city is in district fair, I think we've been all agreed on that. Everything from the common areas, the sidewalks, the main entries, residences, and business, the likes, they all need our attention. I, I haven't seen the city in this rough a condition in many, many years. I don't know how we're going to start, that's what this meeting's about, to start talking about it. Do we start by reaching out to our individual neighbors, ask them if they need our help, you know, if there's something going on with them? Pushing forward from there, between our deed restrictions, the help of JBI C, our city ordinances, I believe we could handle and deal with some of the more extreme cases. The city's adding a new line item this fiscal year budget for $30,000 just for unification. How do we all get together and make some actual progress on that? I believe we're lacking communication. Is there a better way to do this? Does the city need a link or an email similar to JBI C's to report code violations, city ordinance problems? I'm asking for everybody's help on this. I have one piece of input, and that's I dang ditch on fucking here. I mean, can we figure out something? It can't be that much, and it is, it is, you know, it's, it's to the point where if it's not trimmed, when I get back from my vacation, I'm going to take my line trimmer out and trim it myself, because I'm tired of looking at it.
He worked three days last week. It's a process, he can't, one gap, with the weekend, I mean, he's-
Can we, can we marshal up some more resources to get this thought out? Because it is, it's terrible, it really is. I don't mean to be mean to anybody here, or say nobody's working hard, but that just doesn't look good.
I think we also added some money for additional driving.
So, the thirty grand, if you call me, what, beautification?
It's wide open.
What's the number? City beautification.
On your item, I believe the city wants to outsource that to a subcontractor, but I agree. We need to go down the list. Our sidewalks are overgrown, some of them are impassable. Everything from signage, from construction signs to our street signs, the, the list is endless. But our one maintenance person can't handle it, our PD can't handle it on their own, JBI C can't do it on their own. We all need to pull together as a community and a village, and we need to turn this around. I, I'm proud of the city, I, I want, when I drive down the street, I want to be proud of it. The condition of City Hall is dilapidated, it needs to be power washed and painted. So, how do we unify? How do we come together? How do we make a punch list and set calls and move forward?
We're working on a lot of that with our list. Robert, now that we're so happy to have Rob on the board, um, the, the thing is, some of our projects have to be budgeted, so we have to wait till we get approval, when they get over a certain amount, we have to do the budgeting. But a lot of the items that we, it's just general maintenance, and we've got to get more vigilance. And I think with Rob being here now, we're going to, it's going to take a little time to catch up, but at least we are going to catch up. We will catch up.
Maybe if you still want, might as well do it, and get some additional equipment for him, other than, if you don't understand.
And then, and then, like I said, uh, get some help, just where it's, where it's a little dangerous down there, and, uh-
It's about as good a looking gal right here. Can't hear back there.
On, on, on JBI C, maybe we could try to work out something, we put up X amount of dollars, maybe they can match us to try to, you know?
For the funding side of it?
Yes.
Before that setting comes to play, how can we get together and develop a cohesive list? With JBI C's going to grab this, we're going to grab that? I don't want to rebuild the wheel, but I, we've, we've got so many projects, you know?
Yeah, can I speak? It all comes down to funding, it all comes down to money. My understanding was that we were going to have a, a list of priorities. Right, and I appreciate you bringing that up. So, we look at the priorities, and we, we take like this beautification, and we give this $30,000 line items, we're hoping to spin it off. That's what I'm looking for, guys, and I think that's where we get the wheel turning.
Did you get your quote from Don on trees, on trees?
No, Don was, he's here. I know he's working on it.
He can't talk.
Yeah. Um, and I think it's, he can't speak, right? He's not allowed to speak. Hey, Don, you're not allowed to speak, I'm sorry. Anyway, uh, I, I'm like, perhaps we'll have something before turning? It's something like he's talking about, it's kind of simple.
JBI C is on the agenda, I mean, they're on the agenda. I added them as in there to talk, if you can get them in.
You've added some stuff in there from?
No.
No, no, no.
Jamaica Beach and JBI C, so, JBI C is on the list.
So, that should be worth it all.
So, okay.
They're on there, so we'll need to talk.
I was told we couldn't talk.
You can't?
Well, no, well, hey, I have property.
Oh, are you?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, let's, because you are on the agenda, so I believe that would be- Okay, well, that's fine, that's why I wanted to, didn't know what I could and couldn't do. So, we've been working on, uh, getting estimates on replacing the trees, and, and replacing the trees will also cost us to replace the lights, because the lights are currently where the dead trees are, and you can't put a new tree where a dead tree is, because if it was diseased, then the roots are still going to have the disease. So, we've been looking at alternatives, when we found out that that, that's what we're looking at. I mean, to put new lights would be around $15,000. Uh, trees are going to be somewhere in the six to, uh, eight thousand, just to throw out numbers. Uh, the, we had at the last, uh, JBI C meeting, a discussion that, uh, maybe we don't put as many trees in, and that we put maybe flowering plants or something like that in, utilize the lights to uplight the, the plants. So, that's only been a couple of weeks, and we're still working on estimates on what that's going to be. So, if you come to the next meeting, hopefully we'll have, uh, the next JBI C meeting, which is the 27th. Uh, we'll have some numbers there, and, uh, you know, we need input from everybody, you know? So, show up to a meeting, please. Uh, you know, if you don't want, you know, more plants, but you want more trees, or you don't want more trees, you want more plants. Uh, right now, with the scenario that we're looking at, we're not going to replace the lights, we're just going to replace the trees with plants, and put a couple of extra trees in, just to keep the, the up, you know, the size. And we'll continue to, uh, decorate those for Christmas, so that, uh, you know, when you walk in, you know, I don't know if you remember last year, but we, because of the dead trees, we, we only went up so far, because there wasn't anything up above to, to wrap, so we covered all the oleanders with the lights, so it wasn't as quite as big. And then, the year before, don't know if you remember, but there was a lot of people that didn't care for the way the little trees were, were lit. It was somewhat, uh- Yeah. Uh, so it looked like a orchard of, uh, anyway. Uh, so, you know, we're, we're, we're willing to work with everybody. The city did pay to have the trees cut down and have them silt ground, and so, as opposed to trying to work a fifty-fifty deal, if we do, where we don't replace the electrical lights, JBI C will pick up the cover, the cost of finishing the plants and the trees and, and that type of situation, so that it wouldn't be, did you already pay five, six thousand dollars to have the trees removed? Okay. Wow. Um, so, that's where we stand. Now, you know, we, we have, you know, we're open to suggestions, and at one time, the city was going to have a beautification persons that, uh, you know, to talk to about, you know, the projects. And I don't know that, uh- That's with the operations managers. Okay, okay, so as opposed to the city council? Yes, been a person, alter, alter, move, uh, person. Dave's going to more or less pick up that liaison. Okay, because I know Marcie was, uh, at one time, we talked, I talked to her about things. Yeah. I mean, there are things that we would like to, to do with JBI C, but, you know, like Fox Smith north of, uh, of the park. Well, there's a, a barbed wire fence that's, well, that we can't mow around, because there's steel poles, there's barbed wire fence from the owner next door. When he put in his new fence, he came in three feet into his property, left the old fence. Well, we've had bids of twenty to forty thousand dollars to go in, and because it's labor intense to get in there and pull the, the barbed wire fence, uh, you know, JBI C also, you know, painted the, the sign out in front of City Hall. We want to paint the welcome sign, but, you know, the one was damaged, so we want to paint a damaged sign, and that was done by, who was it, Queen Brothers, or whoever did the 3005, when they put in the culvert over there of the sign, uh, you know, in front of the Realtors Building. You know, when they did whatever they did to 3005, and they put in the, the drainage, I mean, they just ripped out uh, anywhere from ten to fifteen plants. And, you know, again, we don't have a standing, we don't own anything. The only thing that JBI C owns is actually the sanctuary, and that was donated to us, and we pay tax on it, but the stipulation was that we didn't do anything to it. They wanted it left natural, and that was the agreement, so, uh, but we're, we're more than open to, uh, to working, you know, but just don't know who. So, any questions? Does anybody here want, think that the Esplanade should have more or less trees? Oh, I, oh, I'm sorry, I can't ask, yeah, I'm sorry. Does anybody up here want more or less trees, or more or less, you know? You can't talk at the 27th meeting, and if you want to come out and you want to voice your opinion as to what we should do-
I thought we did that.
-with the Esplanade.
Well, not all these people were here, though.
Well-
Well, we had very limited, we talked about it, and, uh, and, and at that point, is when we found out that, you know, they were, you know, we were thinking about replacing with six, seven trees, and then it came down, back down to five, and then now, you know, back down to two. So, you know, I mean, we are here, and we have a fiduciary responsibility, every homeowner in Jamaica Beach, and we need your input. So, I mean, I'm, we're talking about a few things as we, uh, we're looking at the same amount, if not a few more, because they're going to be a lot smaller. Yeah. Any other, any other?
Just a suggestion, um, my suggestion, if you take a look for it, maybe get, uh, JBI C, the city and the hot tax join together and put a pool of money, it's formal committee on what, what they would like the city, uh, take this, get your input, yeah, on the beautification, where we want the city to go.
And if you all want input, come to our meeting, and then you can talk to tell us.
Thank you, Don.
All right. Any guys, anything else? Uh, next item, discussion on proposed tax rate for 2022. I'm sorry, uh, discussion on proposal fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual budget, Mr. Debbie?
Okay, it's getting very, the budget is what I've just put some preliminary numbers together. It's extremely, extremely tight this year, if we're going to do some repairs, doing a couple of things that I know that need to be repaired. This is just something for you to look at, we have one, possibly two meetings to finalize this budget. So, I give you some preliminary budget numbers, once you look through them, see what you want to discuss, if you want to discuss. I have to get it, we have to get it passed in September for October to be effective on October. So, y'all got it.
Question right now is what tax rate is that?
On what?
The, um, city, okay, add the war.
Oh, that's my, that's my next one. Hold on.
Because that's, that, you know, every, all of this, everything-
Makes more sense if I know that.
Well, it's, it's the next one. I, I just give you that, so y'all can look through it, okay? It's getting down to where we have possibly one, maybe two meetings to where this has to be finalized, okay? So, I want y'all to look through it.
Do you, do you feel we need at least two meetings?
Well, I mean, you have, I mean, you have to have it passed, either if we're going to move our meeting back in September for Labor Day, we either have to pass it the 19th, or if we do extend it and move everything back, we, you have to pass it by the 26th. So, that gives you, we can have a budget workshop next meeting, which is what, the 22nd?
Yes.
Okay, and then you're getting to the point where we have to get it passed, because I have to do a public hearing, and you have to post that. Okay, so, and it's going to run with that tax rate, and we have to pass the tax rate.
That's why I'm bringing this up.
Okay, well, we're getting down to weeks, is what I'm trying to-
We did that last time, we did it one in like two weeks, but, um-
That's kind of, that's kind of, I was very limited on how I put it together, too, so, but, anyway, that's preliminary numbers. If you want to go to the next line item, it talks about the tax rate, Yawson County, but you've got it in there. They've given us our preliminary rate, y'all have to decide next meeting. They're giving us two rates this year. If you look up the, that's page nine, there's the no new revenue rate, the new rate for the coming year is zero one, zero point one five three, six two nine per hundred, which I've actually done the numbers on that. If you want to go with that no new revenue rate, the income will be eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. And if you go with the voter approval rate, which is the highest rate that you can go without having to bring it out to the citizens to, to vote on, that would be, um, zero one, six five three, six one three, with stat revenue, it would be nine, nine hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. So, that's pretty much-
Should the voting, you know, the ones that you put together, what, what?
I used the higher one, I used the-
You took the high number?
I did.
Thank you.
Is with these projects that you're going to, you know, you're going to need to have.
We have, we have a lot of projects.
It's actually, the rate is actually lower than what it was last year.
The rate is lower.
But you've got more value, more homes, you know, so that, that actually-
That's one of the county limits of home work.
I mean, that's the only two, you need to pick one or, one or the other. Or we go out for, you know, you go out and proposition out for the, for the citizens of, uh, Chris Dennis. Anyway, those are the two.
I, um, I have sent, um, Debbie some, um, questions, and I know she hasn't had time to, um, probably answer, but I'm just curious if there is a, you know, any kind of a mayor order because of this investigation that's going on, that she can't respond to me, because I can't, um, apparently email, um, several director of operations, so-
Your, your list was real long, and it's going to take, I was so busy trying to get this done for this meeting, I've got it.
Okay.
But I have to break it down.
So, there is no reason why, don't, don't work by the mayor that you can't answer my emails?
No, we're talking about taxes.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I haven't had time to get to it.
My email was about taxes.
It was about salaries, it was about departments, this, I mean, it was about the budget, pretty much.
Yeah.
I mean, I-
Yeah, I'd be curious if, when, when we can get around to that, I know you're prepared to do it. But at what point can we ask about individual things on the budget? When can we go line by line and ask questions on the budget?
In the budgetary meeting.
And is that now?
No.
This is workshop, I just give it to you to look at, I mean, if you got questions, we can discuss them on the next meeting, because we're going to, we'll have a budget workshop.
Okay.
Well, we've already had-
Well, yeah, y'all, I never got any-
We've already had two budget meetings.
But we haven't changed mine to a line on this.
No, but you could, when we ask questions, when, uh, given everyone an opportunity.
So, y'all need to start the meeting at three o'clock? If we're going to go line by line, we're going to take some time.
I'm loving it, I can be here at eight o'clock in the morning.
No, Miss Hannah, is this our third or fourth budget?
Fourth, third, let's see, one, third being clear, when we could ask questions about individual items.
Well, when I said, you have any questions about it, that was everyone's opportunity.
Oh, so then I could ask questions now?
Uh, this is not budgetary, but you, like, so we've had two other meetings for-
All I did here was give you a proposal.
Yeah.
You look at that proposed budget, that's the closest that I can get, uh, from what we did last year, but I'm proposing what the budget will be, looks like this year, and if you look, I mean, it's so tight, it squips. You know what I'm saying?
You're right.
It is, so, and, and some line items I cut, some line items I had to raise, because we're over, you know, so it just-
Would you touch base for everybody to know about our two large projects and one that was unexpected?
Well, we-
Yeah, that's coming up.
It's coming up, I gave that to Robert to kind of, anyway, that, that, that's my two, that I'm discussing tonight, your tax rate. Simple, you just have to tell me which one you want to go with, and then this is the, this is the proposed.
Yeah.
I know there's adjustments, that's why, okay, okay.
Okay, I just want to say, though, okay? A real budgetary meeting, where we go line by line, yeah, that's a lot of work.
That's a lot of department energy in that, too.
It takes a lot of time, and it's a lot of work. But this means it's work. That is also why we, you can discuss that at any time with the call.
I'm not down there with specific budgetary meeting, where we do that.
Okay, I mean, like I said, this-
This is our third.
Yeah, this is our third.
This is our third.
And everything you're asking for is in this.
This is ridiculous.
Yes.
I've gone through it line by line at least three or four times already myself.
Congratulations, I have.
This is the first time I've seen this, how have you still gone through it before now?
We've had two other meetings where this was, where something very similar to this was brought up.
All I've got before was the 2021, 22, and then, um, but I've not seen the 22, 23 budget. This is the first I've seen of it, and you not be giving me all of the same papers that everyone else is getting? And this is the first time.
No, it's not, we, we've, we've all got it.
I've been working off of that.
Yeah, we've all been working off of this.
Um, I mean, Alderman Jones, what's happened is it, it, it changes as, as they, as you review this. They have given us different ones that are somewhat different, this is just the latest take. But this is the one that, where we draw the line, this is the one we're going to discuss.
That's correct.
And if you change again for the next meeting?
That is correct. Last time, I think I changed it five times.
Yeah. Next item is discussion on engineering costs to repair the wastewater treatment plant that's just got going in our face. And I might as well, uh, also include discussion repairs of Bayside River Station, which was a complete surprise, so.
Well, uh, let's go five-five, five point five first, uh.
Okay.
We did have, uh, Mercer Associates come in, uh, John Mercer Associates can, can visit with us on TV last week. And, uh, we went for wastewater plant, uh, there's gonna be, oh, we don't even have the specs for it, but it's gonna take a lot of work there. Councilman, uh, Matt Ray was there and, um, we toured the plant, it's even been a bit weird, something, we didn't know. That it's gonna be, we're gonna need a new generator out there. And in order to put the new generator out there, we're gonna have to tear out the wall to replace the old one. If, if y'all go out there, if you get out there, if you see that, it looks like the generator was put around there and then the building was built around it. Because I, I don't know how it got in there. Uh, so that's gonna take some work there, so if they're gonna, they haven't gotten the numbers, they told me they were trying to get it to you by today, they haven't. So that's what I have on, on, on the wastewater treatment plant. Now, on the, the problem that we didn't know, we had the problem, is, uh, five point six, and that's the river station, uh, Bayside River Station number seven. This estimate costs a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And we didn't know, and we went there because we thought, we were told that just need some gas getting replaced. When the manhole, uh, was removed, and, and the doors were open, rather, uh, the vault was spewing, just spewing all over the place. Uh, Gil was there and he probably enlightened me a little bit more on it, uh, because it was just something that needs to be replaced. There was a hole in one of the pipes, and that can get worse. Uh, but this thing, we need to take care of it as soon as possible.
This is a, we can't wait, we gotta do it, with that budget.
Yes, it's priority.
So, because if, if we don't, we're probably subject to fines, correct?
Well, fines are more, a bigger price.
Yeah.
And then too, I tried to put that in there, I tried to figure that emergency cost in your municipal funds, plus that water line. Face of the water line, I tried to put it in there to budget for those numbers coming up that those funds will be allocated for. If y'all so chooses what you wanna do.
Um, yeah, I was at that meeting. First thing, on the waste, on the waste treatment plant, actually is good news. The wastewater plant, since I've been there, I've heard that we're in a horrible situation, the wastewater treatment plant cannot properly process the sewage in our community, that's not true. The engineers, when they designed that wastewater treatment plant, they took into account the build-out. So they provided enough capacity for build-out. U S T is telling us that that plant, as it is, as it's running today, can process what we need to process. That's good news, we don't have to have a new plant. The plant is divided into two sections. Okay? And they, and they did this, and this was kind of back in the seventies, they did a very good job. The, um, the reason that is, is you can shift, you can shift sides, because what happens on the side that we're running now is you get sand and debris in it, so it loses its efficiency, because it works on volume in the basin. So once you get too much sand and stuff in it, you start losing efficiency. They calculated that in, they probably have twenty-five percent excess, so we can still run. But in the future, we need to be able to switch slides, clean one side, okay? Go back into operation on the other side, or leave it as it is, just to run it. So, and to my way of thinking, Mr. Mayor, that is very good news.
Right. When, when I'm always, uh, is, you know, it's, uh, it gets sucked out regularly, you know, we see that, you see the tank truck.
Yeah, when they pull out, out the, the bad bugs.
Right, and also, uh, it has a weekly testing, and we've always passed, because they would come down more on us.
Well, this is just one.
So it is, it is, we, we've got some, we've got one doing, we've got doing the job. Well, my biggest issue, and I've always heard, is we didn't have that automatic switch, where it switches from one side to the other.
They're saying we did it.
They said we did it.
One side's inoperable, it's been inoperable for years, so we're working on, on one side only, we can't switch over to clean, we can't switch.
That's where it is corroded.
Okay, so switch or the?
No, they're saying, they're saying the supports and supports are on the side, okay? And mixer, mixer body is corroded, and, and that's what the problem is, that's what U S T is saying, and that's what Mercer is saying. So, and on the generator, on the generator. Where I'm at on that, because I was at that meeting, is let's see what ambidextrous we're actually using. Um, maybe we don't have to have a completely new generator, a lot of ways to handle something like that, you can split loads, okay? I mean, let's let this engineering company look at it, make a recommendation.
So that's basically what we're waiting on at this point?
I don't mind paying them to do that. And I certainly don't mind paying them to engineer the, this emergency fix.
Yeah, and that's.
At river station seven.
Yeah, they've, they've done that.
And these are the types of things, wow, to sit down and really look at this budget. Thank you.
Is this for engineering or for repairing? Because the estimate costs for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, that's for engineering or repair?
Repair.
That's repairs.
Repairs.
Correct.
Can we get a list of what those repairs will be?
Sure, I can't tell you the list of the laundry list right now, but it has to be, the pipes need to be done, it has to be relased on the walls.
Could you just?
It's similar, so, I'll get you, I'll get you this, I had my list.
Thank you.
We have a similar project just done right here.
Yeah, right back here.
Yes.
We just.
We just talked about that.
There's a lot of money.
We got a new point for that one.
It really is a lot of money. And it was a surprise, but it, it, it is an emergency.
Uh, I'm, no, any, any?
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, item number five point seven, discussion on short-term rentals and the hospice compliance.
So. I have a question, why are we forcing the owners, the owners on the owners, the bad actors over leading renters, right? I'm sorry, can you do that? Why is the onus on the owner of the property, why isn't it on the renter? The renter is creating the commotion. Um, I think we just need more teeth and more.
Enforcement.
Enforcement on the renters, and I think the fine for a second visit should actually kind of hurt. You know, something that gets their attention and then a third call in there off the premises, it gets it.
And, and that's what we.
Doesn't matter what you pay for the weekend, I think we get a little more teeth and because it, it's really tough to tell a property owner what they should, shouldn't do with their property, I mean, that's their property, they own it, they have the right, I think.
It's a constitutional right.
It should be, I don't know, it's a constitutional right, but they have the right to use the property as they see fit. I, I think just going after the renters, going after them with some teeth instead of a little slap on the head, that's what I think would be different.
When we, I'm gonna, product enforcement, is, um, we don't know how much, how, how, how many calls for service that our J P D does. For instance, we don't know how many, um, actions of enforcing, or citations, or arrests. We don't have any follow-up with, we have no idea of follow-up with homeowners, which is in the ordinance itself. It states that, um, complaints related to the operation of short-term rental, including, but not limited to complaints concerning noise, garbage, parking, and disorderly conduct, I guess, shall be reported to the Jamaica Beach Police Department. Each complaint will be investigated and proper legal will, action will be taken. All investigative findings will be covered with the owner or operator of the short-term rental. How many times has J P D been called out? How many times have they done it? Citations, um, I can't, it would really help to have some kind of data.
Well, it's, it's being done in a lot stricter than it's ever been done now.
That's all, I'm, I'm sorry, but it's none. The sword I'm looking for, it's not codifying, right? It needs to be in code so that our police.
Wait, it's ordinance.
Yeah, ordinance, that's code.
Yeah.
Needs to be in the code so that our police know, hey, these are the rules, and I'm, I as the executive part of our government, or I'm supposed to enforce this set of rules. We're the ones, council, who needs to come up with these rules and give our policemen some help. I mean, they can't go on a case-by-case basis, I have to, we need to do it fast, and they need to, they, uh.
Yeah, and like I said, that's one thing we've, we've had a lot of discussion, a lot more discussion on is tolerance, having more of a zero tolerance. But there again, then that also goes to homeowners as well as S T Rs. I mean, so if you're having a party, you know, there, there's, there's a fine line there that they have to walk. When they come, when they go to a property, a lot of times they don't know if it's the, the owner or rent, you know, but they, it's, they're not gonna ask.
And we have noise ordinance.
Shouldn't matter.
Yeah.
Shouldn't matter. They have a rental agreement.
So it doesn't matter if it's a homeowner or a renter, it, it should be, I would, it should be enforced equally.
Correct.
And we need to have data, I'm still back to data, we have no data that says what our police department is doing, period. Are you, have they given that one citation this year over, over noise ordinance?
There's been several.
Well, that would hurt us, makes it a bit difficult.
I, I think it would, quite, you know, you know, complaints and addresses and just something for, for us as council to say. Is this, is this something we can help solve?
Right.
I don't, I'm not saying that we need to, that I look negative, gritty and, and have a, you know, rule about how many people could be on the ad house and stand there with the, with the microphone and you measure the discipline. I, I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't, because we need to add something that gives our constituency a ability to do their job. And I think to do a little better, because I don't know about all of you, but I have four short-term rentals right around my property, and it can get a little boisterous sometimes.
I have the park right across the street talking about sound volume and all.
Oh, Russell, I mean, you had, go ahead, I'm sorry, I jumped in and didn't get you to discuss, I know we were talking about the, those compliance.
Can, can you stick on that question a little bit?
That's what we're doing.
Okay.
Go, go, I'm sorry, go with what I'm thinking.
We just got a renewal notice from our third-party subcontractor for our S T R, what do we want to call it, our, our managing company?
Police company, I guess.
Alright, they're, they're about to come up on their contract this time next month. And it's been brought to my attention that everything they promised, everything they guaranteed is, is not working out. There were snafus from the beginning, there's programming issues, there's billing issues, it's not working out.
O C issues.
Top to bottom, um, this is coming up within thirty days, we, we gotta do something with it. Either they've got to guarantee their contract and provide the services they agree to, or we're gonna have to do something else. We're almost a year into this, a couple of examples are. They have two hundred and fifty-four short-term rental rentals registered. By the way, that's the number in our neighborhood now, two hundred and fifty-four short-term rentals is what's registered, everybody always asks that.
Two hundred and fifty-four?
Yes, sir.
Registered.
No, oh, excuse me, yes, registered, but only fifty percent of those people that register paid the filing fee. Now, post-compliance didn't collect that fee and can't collect that fee. The way the city knows who paid that fee and who doesn't is written down, handwritten on a piece of paper right now. That, that's how bad this is. This S T R, I almost feel like I'm out of deja vu with this meeting with what you just said, David, we've done this before, you said we need more teeth. We've, we've done this whole thing before, it's not working, we, we gotta do something now. This comes up in a month, I'd really like everybody to look at it and, um, make a decision which way to move forward, but this isn't working as it stands. It was a great idea, it just didn't actualize. So, I'm gonna ask the question, because I wanna know a lot about this particular company, who are some of their other clients?
Oh, they, um, yeah.
I think Lake City just, just left them, or just decided not to go?
There were several around here, I don't recall, it's been a year and a half ago.
So, they're well-known down there.
Yes.
Next, so we question is.
Well, some of the issues is, when they originally set this account up for the city of Jamaica Beach. They put it in their system that the tax could be paid monthly, we don't collect tax monthly, we collect a quarter. That was one issue, so everybody's getting, we're, we're getting past due notices, letters, emails, so it's been, it's been a cluster to try to get. Don't send the letters, and, so it's, if, if they can actually, if you wanna continue with them, if they can actually correct the issues that were done in the very beginning to set it up, to pay quarterly, like, you know, even the businesses, say like City and C, they may have, they may have, I don't know, say thirty homes that they take care of, and they don't wanna send thirty different checks, they pay one time a month, or a quarter rather, for their, for all their listings of their assets they manage. Well, you can't do that on the, on the website to do that, so they still send it to Nola. Nola, she takes that, but she has to manually enter that into this, I guess, host company, and she, she can only enter several at a time and it kicks her out. So it's been a little hard, if they, you know, I'm saying, if they can actually fix some of their issues.
I'm an I T consultant, finding a job like this, I'd be fired.
I'd be fired, yeah, this was set up at the very beginning.
Yeah, I understand.
It was set up correctly, and they have not and will not change.
I understand, I'm giving you credit, you have, not only with the current situation, but this has been going on a while. And they, they have offered assurances, right, that everything's gonna be better?
Well, they haven't.
Well, then, maybe it's time to find someone.
Well, no, I mean, like I said.
I, I know we're not voting, but I'm just.
But this, I needed to know too, this, why, if y'all wanted to budget this fifteen, fourteen thousand for the next year or not, so this is kind of where we're at.
Okay.
We're glad you.
I didn't put it in there, so I just needed to know. Yes.
So they've collected, how much did they cost, they, their, the cost for this company?
We paid them, we budgeted fifteen last year, I think we got them down to thirteen, maybe.
And how much did they, and how much did they, um, what's the word I want?
Fifty dollars in, uh, the restoration fee that the homeowners paid. I think we've collected fifty percent of that, say, say sixty-five, sixty-four hundred dollars, so we're still, it's about fifty-fifty. You know, what they, what we've collected back, we were supposed to make anywhere from ten to twenty percent in additional revenue for the homes that they located, or they found that were not actually paying high tax.
Did they find any?
No, not really, Nola's got more than they got, honestly.
So it's been a lot of empty costs to the real.
But we're halfway invested, so the staff has some concerns.
But what, what we tried to talk about was if we totally did not renew this contract, what would we lose? Would we lose the website for people that have already started paying quarterly? There's, we've got, we've got a curve that we've got to figure out what to do if we don't do it either, see what I'm saying? Yeah, if they can probably, if they can correct everything that's done in the original contract, then we probably would be worth doing. If they can't, and Nola's still, I should do a lot of it by hand, and they're, they're still sending out, they're emailing people now, you've not paid your taxes, which.
So it's made double more.
Yes.
Yeah, we have a lot of, we have issues.
But we need to, Nola's in a, uh.
I take it we, we paid them upfront.
We have paid, yes. So one-time payment thing, now they're, they're just in this one to renew their contract. Situation, if they can fix their issues, maybe, if they can't, then, but that's what we're trying to figure out how we can keep. Because now, if you pay your taxes quarterly online, it goes already to the bank, and it's, it's so it's set, we, it's kind of a catch point too.
Yes.
On how we're gonna have to figure out to keep it or not.
Sure wish we had a good I T guy to pay for it.
That's what I was saying, you were hitting now.
I knew you were talking about. One other interesting tidbit, why, why we're on this, is to date, the city has collected over six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in hot taxes.
Yes. Yes, if you go back to this.
So how many years is that?
This fiscal year.
So that's starting from October of last year to?
Thirty.
Correct. And that's a rough number.
I'd like to go back to this enforcement of S T R. I agree with you, David. I don't want to get in the bushes on how it's done. But every call I get, and I'm trying to get them now, and when I talk to people, their complaint is that there's nothing filed on it. If we don't go back to the complainant, you know, we don't go back to the complainant, there's no official filing or whatever. And I'm not an expert on this. I really don't know exactly what we should do, but if there's something, I mean, I can't even answer these people's, honestly, even talk to them about it, because I don't know if, if it is a problem. Maybe the S T Rs are not a problem, guys, okay? There's no damn way to know. We don't have, we don't know. So that's it. I don't want to say how. I'm just saying that I think it's an absolute failure in our police department that we're not properly.
Well, uh, we will get some of these issues addressed for sure. Other than that, that's it from meeting adjourned. No.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, everybody, for coming and watching.